6:00 PM, there was no regular business conducted at that meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
President.
President.
Mrs. Fisher.
Present.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Mr. Penderski. Mrs. Rose. Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mrs. Wold.
Here. What was covered at the executive session at 6:00 PM was the discussion of matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Well, that brings us to the President's Report. Thank you very much to all of you who are here braving the snow on this blustery night. And I would just like to highlight that over the past month, Leslie Fisher and I have had the pleasure of serving on the Grants Committee of the Spirit of 67. This group meets several times a week and diligently reviews grants that are submitted by teachers, administrators, students, and parents. I want to applaud everyone who serves on this committee. They ask bright, insightful questions. There are disagreements that are handled very respectfully in which people are sharing differing opinions. And there is an extreme amount of thoughtfulness and care that goes into determining how to best spend those funds that the Spirit of 67 volunteers work so diligently to earn. So, thanks very much to everyone on that committee. Do you want to add anything, Leslie?
I echo what Julia has said. It's been an interesting process to be a part of. And I also applaud all of our teachers who, and some parents, who have taken the time to go through the somewhat can-be lengthy process of grant writing to benefit the kids.
And that concludes the President's Report. Mr. Simic and the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. There's a great deal to report. This last month, we have a little bit less of a turnout tonight because of the snow. We had orchestra. It was planned, we had planned on coming. We had a Teacher of the Year from WBEM, Bears, the Bears, and Anna Burns for that, and some other things. So, we're going to go with an abbreviated agenda. And Dr. Hendrickson is going to tell us about the really big undertaking that we had, a large number of Chinese visitors that came to visit us in the last month.
So, Mike's connection with Michigan State University and other educators brought us 25 visiting science teachers, middle school and high school. And Jim Sullivan at the high school and we at the middle school created a schedule for them to go visit middle school science classes, some of our other classes that you wouldn't typically see in China, the special applied tech, wellness, things like that. And they had a thoroughly enjoyable time. We got rave reviews from them. They had visited two other districts and said that ours by far had the resources, the well-behaved, mature kids, and an enthusiastic staff. So, it was fun. One of the greatest outcomes of it was we asked Christina Chen, our third through sixth grade Mandarin teacher, to act as a tour guide translator for them for the day because they didn't speak English. And they told her she is crazy to think about going back to China. And so, whereas she's finishing her Michigan State University program this year, and she was planning on going back to be with her family, she has decided to stay with us. So, we're working hard to keep her with visas, et cetera. But they really talked about, wow, you've got it going here in Lake Forest. This is a great place. And it was fun for us because we set it up as a cultural exchange where our teachers ate lunch with them and learned about the programs in China as well. So, thanks to Mike for the connection.
And thanks to Dr. Hendrickson and Mr. Sullivan for a lot of work, put together really an impressive itinerary for these folks, and not an easy thing to move people around the buildings. And one of the things that they discovered in the course of this was that the Chinese are really reluctant to move from any one place to any other place because they want to stop and take pictures and talk to kids and so on. One of the real surprises was how many of our students willingly engaged them in using their Mandarin. And this was K through 12, so elementary district and high school district kids, walking up and chattering away, using their skills. So, it's one of the surprises for the visiting teachers and also for us. Really well organized. Mr. Yao, who is the person from whom, whose organization brings the Chinese teachers to Michigan State University, he's also been in the district. This is his third visit now, and he said that the Mandarin program that we have is hands down the best Mandarin program that he has seen anywhere. And that's what he does for a living in part. So, other things that we have going on are that we are going to be hopefully approving the hire of Mrs. Kelly Jackson to be the principal of Cherokee Elementary. The search has come to a conclusion and really, really happy with the result of that. The search wound up being quite different than I had expected. This is my first search in Illinois, and one of the things that we advertised in Edweek Magazine, a national advertise, a national publication, we did not have out-of-state candidates that were viable, which was something that I had anticipated. And their talent pool was sizable. We had about 80 in the initial pool and called other resources in to help. And I asked, you know, why is that, that we didn't have any out-of-state candidates? And it's one of the repercussions of the changes to the retirement system is that people of a certain age, 30s and 40s, or your elementary principals, are not going to be moving into the district because the retirement system is no longer attractive to them as it used to be. So, we're going to have to find other means to increase our talent pool. Another, one of the surprises was that I had anticipated that we would be attracting seated, exemplary principals, and that is not the case. People that are looking for a job are not going to make a lateral move if they are peak performers in their current district. And so, what that turned into for us was looking at an assistant principal pool and assessing who had the greatest potential. And we landed on Mrs. Kelly Jackson and very happy with that selection. So, an exhaustive background check on her, her HR director, her coworkers, her direct supervisor, her superintendent, her former superintendent, she had taught in Michigan for a while, I knew that superintendent, and the HR director, the curriculum director in that former district as well. And everything came back with, this is a consistently peak performing person. So, very happy to see that. Also, we had Tri-District Day, also known as Institute Day. Where District 65, 67, and 115 were all together this last Friday at the high school. One of the things that people have been interested in and surprised by is the level of coordination that Dr. Sophie, Lake Bluff's new superintendent, and I have. She is very smart. She's very hardworking. She's very child-centered, was great fun to work with. And she's also very interested in not standing in front of a group of people and talking for an hour and a half, but instead finding an activity that engages people in an exercise that they find meaningful, that works on an item of shared interest. So, for both, for all three of the districts, that item was what's next for our schools. So, a visioning exercise of sorts with them. We thought it went quite well. It was really interesting to hear. We asked the entire collected staffs to come up with a tagline for their ideal school in five words, and the variety of those taglines was really interesting. We had those read off at the end of that portion of the meeting. We'll take that and extend that into other groups that we work with in our community. So, with that, thank you for the opportunity, Mrs. Wold.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. This brings us to public participation. Is there a member of the audience who would like to address the board? Please rise, and you may do so now. Seeing none, we will move on to our reports and discussion. And the first item is the change in ISAT scoring report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And Dr. Cooley and Mr. Moline will address that jointly, I believe.
Okay, good evening. Earlier this month, the State Board announced that there would be some changes to the performance expectations for our grade three through eight assessment, which is known as the ISAT. Although changes are somewhat idiosyncratic to the grade level, in general, generally speaking, the results, the result of the change is that the targets are more ambitious so that the bar is being raised, so to speak, in comparison to what they have been until now. The State Board has shared that the raising of the bar is associated with the idea of college and career readiness. And what they've actually done, what they've shared that they've done is to backward map from what looks like college readiness, looking back, all the way back to third grade, what would be projected scores that would be required to get to that point. So, that's the methodology that they used. And helpfully, the State Board has also applied these changes to recent annual tests so we could get a little bit of a sense of what the changes will look like in terms of results. So, here you can see a graph showing, let's start maybe on the first, the first two, the first part of this, the left side, the reading. Under current scoring methods, the current ISAT, which is the most recent results that we received from last spring's administration, we had 96% of our students indicated as meeting or exceeding standards. Now, if the future scoring methods had been applied, it would have instead looked at as if 85% of our students had met or exceeded standards. And you can also look at the differences in terms of exceeds, in terms of meets, below and warning. And as I was saying, generally speaking, the bar has been raised in terms of what's expected, and this will affect every district in the state, not just us. And it is a fairly significant change, though. It will appear as if our students are not achieving as well in an aggregate, but in reality, it's the fact that the bar has actually changed. So, it's kind of like, if you remember, a teacher, or a teacher who asked for 93% to be an A instead of 90%, maybe that's an example where the same performance might end up with an A- versus an A depending on who your teacher is. So, we just wanted to communicate this with you, and Julie will now share with you some additional key points about this change.
So, there are a few things that we thought our community would like to know in addition to the fact that there's just a flat-out change. One of the things, of course, and Joe mentioned this a little bit, is that our relative ranking within the state won't change with this change. So, whatever place we're in, we'll likely be about the same. It could vary just a little bit depending on the ranges of each individual school, but we'll be relatively the same. So, this change again applies to all schools in the state of Illinois, so all schools will therefore have fewer students who meet the standards. Again, it doesn't mean that our students answered items less correctly. There isn't anything to do with that. Although I do want to add, as a reminder to you, and we've discussed this before, that this spring, there will be 20% of the questions that are new. They'll be more related to the common core standards. So, we will see changes in addition to these scoring methods happen with this test. Also, another question that has come up is what happens to placements and/or determining what students might need support in the district regarding ISAT? And what I'd like you to know is that ISAT is actually not used in our district for any purpose related to determining whether or not a student needs an intervention or if there's a placement of some kind, whether it be in the gifted program or perhaps special education program or anything like that. ISAT is not nationally normed, therefore it's not used for those purposes. We have several other kinds of measures that we use in the district that are nationally normed, so those will continue to be used just like they have in the past. So, this won't affect those groups of students at all. We're going to continue to monitor all of the changes that are coming. There's going to be change every year over the next several years. There's a consortium of an organization that's working on a new assessment called PARC that would be available two springs from now, and it may include some formative assessment in addition to one summative assessment like the ISAT do now. So, there'll be a lot of change, and we'll continue to inform not only you as board members, but the community and our teachers as well. Included in your packet was a letter that we intend to send to our families and a frequently asked question. So, if you have any input on that, Ann Whipple and I are going to work together to get that out this week, posting it and so forth to our families. We will probably include it in a mailing right around the time of the ISAT, perhaps with the ISAT scores or somewhere in there too. So, we'll use multiple ways to communicate this information to our families and actually to our teachers as well. We want them to perhaps look at this message that we did here tonight, and Joe and I may be going to some of the buildings as we're invited or through their principals, get this information to them as well. Any questions?
Does it look differently when you break out the data by grade?
It does look different grade to grade. Through their back mapping process, they had, there were differences in the ranges that they used for every level depending on the grade and the subject in the past. And so, that hasn't been standardized or made exactly the same across the grades, but it did create things such as some of the ranges for a specific level, particularly the below level changed quite a bit in some grades, as much as double in terms of the range of scores that would be included in it. And then there were others that just had minor changes, maybe 5 to 8%, you know, difference. So, it just varies across all of the grades.
Was there a trend, though, where the younger grades were more or less ready and the higher grades the same?
There is a bit of a trend toward that, that the higher grades already had a more difficult score that they had to attain to get into the exceeds category, so we do see a little bit of that.
I would just like to add one more piece that I hope everyone knows and keeps into consideration, that one score really does not accurately predict college readiness. And if a person were to score on a measure that, you know, didn't, you know, didn't quite meet or something of that nature, that's not necessarily something to be wildly concerned about. I think, you know, one score on one test, it's just important to keep that in mind. They're doing their best to make it a predictive measure, but ultimately, there's so many other factors that go into these things.
And one last thing, I think, for me too, is that the high school scores did not change. And so, if you get that question, it is no. And I think what we can also tell our community is that despite these changes, our outcome for students on that very important test during their junior year in high school, we are very likely to have as strong of a result, and those scoring methods did not change.
So, the PARC assessment, then, that is not necessarily going to occur, but is likely to occur that they will change the ISAT?
The ISAT is due to change in the spring of 2015. Well, if we use some of the formative assessments, it could actually happen earlier in the year, but the summative test would be in that spring.
The PARC would actually replace the ISAT. The PARC would be brought in, a consortium of states have agreed to use that in place of their state tests, so the ISAT would be fully replaced.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much. And then our next report is key educational goals for 2013 and 14. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. I'd like to invite Dr. Hendrickson to the microphone and a little bit of background with the charge that was given to Dr. Hendrickson and Mrs. Jen Knight at the high school. This is a project that we worked on around the cabinet table, the executive leadership group of both District 67 and 115. And each of the districts had different nomenclature for different things, or for the same thing. So, one district would call something a goal, and the other district would call it an objective. And trying to keep all that straight was simply too much for a simple mind like mine. And so, they each had things that they did well and wanted to retain, but also each found things that they were interested in from the other district. And so, the two of them were sent away, Dr. Hendrickson and Mrs. Knight were sent away. All right, meld what makes sense and meaning together and come back to us with a recommendation. And that's what follows here.
Thanks, Mr. Simic. I want to give Julie Cooley a lot of credit there, too. Let's review kind of what stayed the same first. So, we have a vision. We've had a vision here, and it continues to be really important to us. These are the vision statements that kind of guide our goal direction. And then, we've had a couple statements, vision statements, as a district. And these have carried on now, I think, for two or three, maybe even four years to kind of be that umbrella vision for where we're going. District 67 programs will be among the best in the nation. Second vision statement, Lake Forest District 67, will enable students to become the best performing, and it goes on. So, it kind of captures the academic achievement as well as the whole-child nature of where we want our children to develop. So, now, we used to have a couple statements or goals under these vision statements that were a little bit more quantitative. For example, you might remember, we used the NWA as a measure where our students would be achieving at the 99th percentile across the board, reading, math, and NWA. And then, I think we had one where all eighth graders would successfully achieve the curriculum, you know. The difficulty we had as directors and principals was that it was, it's really hard to see how a kindergarten teacher could get her teeth into supporting a goal that didn't really show until eighth grade, or NWA where it started in second even. So, when we looked at how the high school did this, they used key goals to kind of capture a little bit more broadly the various areas that are important to that whole-child development and that good organizational development that we want from all of our community members. And so, there are these key goals that we've worked on with our I L T and through Education Committee. First, the curriculum development. Second, a key goal on instructional practices. And data-based decision-making, something that we have been doing for some years now under Julie Cooley's and Joe Malin's help. Student and staff social-emotional character development. Again, this has been a key area for us for a number of years. So, continuing this as a key goal, and that's the terminology we're using. 21st Century Teaching and Learning has been another goal that's been around now for about three years. Not a top-level goal, but certainly one of those activities that we've always been talking about and trying to focus on. And then, of course, a new one this year that may last for a couple years and then might fall off as it doesn't, it isn't new anymore, is the teacher evaluation system that we've adopted. So, those are our proposed key goals. What I'm excited about, that the high school has done all these years now, is say to the teaching staff, the directors, the grade levels, as well as the departments, okay, here are the six or seven areas and statements that should guide your improvement. What goals can you create that'll quantitatively help these broader goals? So, a first-grade team in our district now might say, might say with 21st Century Teaching and Learning, we want every child to experience self-directedness at least once daily. And so, they might create activities around how to let children make choices within their half an hour of reading or math activity. So, they, you know, that's an example of how a first-grade teacher, who would have had difficulty before saying, well, by eighth grade, hmm, that's hard. But now, first grade, a world language teacher could get involved in a goal like this, a world language team, a math, math department, team leader with all the math department chair could work on this as well. So, what we will be reporting out probably in the spring of 2014 are all those sub-goals that all of our various groups have been working on and how they've made a change for these key goals. So, this is the same as the high school format in this way, and we're real pleased. The high school kind of adopted a couple of our things, and it should be a good thing. Good, good, good charge.
I just had one question. At the beginning, it says it's the goal is to make our students among the best in the nation. Do you think at some point it should say the best in the world?
That's a really good point. Yes, yes. In fact, I think that's a change that we definitely should make because it's something we are working on. Good point. Yeah, before this becomes official, I like that. Good suggestion. Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hendrickson. So, we will be seeing these going forward for the next year as they progress, and there will be further reports, especially in the spring of 2014, on the progress toward these goals. This brings us to our board committee reports. First, we have the Board of Education Committee with Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
Good evening. The Board Education Committee met Tuesday, February 19th, here at Lake Forest High School West Campus. We were joined by members of the community as well as committee member Roger Kwan, myself, Rick Schuler, and Bill Anderson represented the board. First on the agenda was the update on the Cube at DPM East, which was given to us by Alan Albus. And Alan updated the group on this space that is currently being converted from time zone slash old administrative offices into a technology resource center that I think we've all heard a lot about, the Cube, collaboration, creativity, and communication. The project was estimated to be completed on February 22nd, and the actual date of completion will be March 7th, and I think we're sticking to that. Mr. Albus showed pictures of the project in various workstations, in work stages, and the group discussed possible opportunities in order to introduce the public to the new space. And the space will total out at an estimated 7,000 square feet, which will be very well-used in that side of the building. The other two things on the agenda were presented here tonight. The proposed key goals and district mission, vision, and educational vision statements was one of the items on the agenda that Dr. Cooley explained thoroughly. And I thought, and I think that the committee would agree with me and the guests that were there, it is another good example of shared service working. We can learn from the high school, they can learn from us, and we can come to a better place because shared service is in place. The committee discussed the vision statements at length, and the suggestion of creating perhaps a third educational vision statement devoted solely to social-emotional wellness was well-received and will be considered, although, of course, it is mentioned in the second vision statement. Mr. Simic explained that the vision and vision statements of the district will be the continuing work of the Board of Education and will be reevaluated with new board and new superintendent. Key stakeholders throughout the community, including students, will be included in this process. And I would like to credit Bill Anderson on the change in the verbiage. I think that's a great suggestion. And finally, we discussed mainly with Dr. Cooley and Mr. Simic, the new ISAT cut scores that transitioned to the PARC assessments, which of course was presented here tonight. I encourage, as Dr. Cooley did here tonight, I encourage board members, if you haven't gotten a chance, to read the letter, that is, to go out to parents and the community, to please do so and to review it and to give any input that you can to Dr. Cooley and to Mrs. Whipple, as I think this is a very important piece to communicate thoroughly to all community and to parents especially. All those of us here recognizing, well, it really doesn't change anything, but the way it looks may be disconcerting to some, so we need to communicate that. So, thank you. The Education Committee will next meet April 16th at 8:15. And I'm wondering if Mr. Anderson or Mr. Schuler would like to add anything?
Not at this time.
No, thank you, Leslie. That was good.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Board Finance and Operations Committee with Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Penderski.
By default, that would be me, I guess. The Finance and Operations Committee has not met since the last meeting. Our first quarterly meeting is anticipated to be held in March, and the date has not yet been set, but it'll be posted on the
yet been set, but it'll be posted on the website when it is.
Thank you very much, Mr. Julian. This brings us to our liaison reports, the first being the North Suburban Special Education District with Lori Rose, and Lori Rose is not here tonight. We will look forward to that report next month. The Illinois Association of School Boards and EdRed, Bill Anderson.
Thank you. As part of my responsibility, I, as liaison to them, I attended in January with Superintendent Simic, the National Conference of the NSBA, which is the National School Board Association. The NSBA represents 90,000 school board members across the nation, including 6,000 from Illinois. There were nine school board members from Illinois who attended the conference. As members of the NSBA, it's our primary advocacy group for ensuring that the interests of public schools are heard in Washington, DC. Key issues include lobbying to retain local control of public education and ensuring that education is not forgotten in debates on the budget. Mike has been an active member, which can help raise the profile of our school districts in Lake Forest. After the conference, we spent a day on Capitol Hill with legislative staff from both of our senators, our representative, and several other Illinois representatives. The purpose was nonpartisan and focused on the importance of public schools in making our country stronger. Legislative, key legislative issues for the NSBA include amending and reauthorizing the no-child-left-behind law, limiting unfunded mandates from the federal government, and also the NSBA has a bill that they are proposing, which would require the Department of Education and other federal agencies to consult with local districts before making new rules. Overall, I think attending the conference was a time-effective and cost-effective way of making sure that we keep in touch with national issues impacting our district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and thanks for taking the time to attend the This brings us to the Curriculum Coordinating Committee with Lori Rose, again, who is absent. We will hear about that next month. Then the Spirit of 67 Foundation. The Spirit of 67 met on Tuesday, February 12th. Mr. Simic attended the meeting and gave the Spirit a District 67 update. The Spirit has revenues of $157,583 thus far this year. In addition, the Grants Committee has been meeting for the past four weeks. And as a culminating act for the Grants Committee, I would like to urge all current and future board members to attend the grant ceremony, which will be held on Thursday, April 25th, at Elloa Farms. It really is a fabulous way to see the many different ways the Spirit provides enrichment for all of our District 67 students. And that completes the Spirit of 67 report. Are there any other committees which a board member attended and would like to report on?
I had the good fortune of attending the APT Executive meeting this month, and it's always nice to see familiar faces. And I was there on the day where they announced the new officers, so it was very exciting. They have wonderful people going out, they have wonderful people going in, and they feel good about it. It was great to be there.
Thank you, Leslie. And this brings us to our action items. And the first action item is the approval of a tentative amended budget. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and I will hand over to Mrs. Hermes, who can give us an update on our amended budget.
All right. Thank you, board members and Mr. Simic. It may appear a little bit like deja vu, because you're probably wondering to yourself, didn't we just approve the 1213 budget? Yes, we did. We did this in September. And if recall, at that point, we highly expected that we would come back with an amended budget, primarily due to our Cube project that Mrs. Fisher talked about, and also the Deer Path Tile Project. If you recall, we had several board meetings where we've discussed that particular project. Before you tonight is the tentative amended budget. This has to follow the exact same process that we use to approve the original budget, which means that before you tonight is a resolution which authorizes us to put that budget on display. We put a legal ad in the newspaper, is available for public inspection. Anyone can come in and ask to see the tentative budget. It also requires that we post that for 30 days. You'll notice there are only 28 days between our February meeting and our March meeting. So we will actually post it tomorrow, but it will stay there until our April meeting in order to meet the 30-day requirement. There are only three changes in that tentative amended budget. The Deer Path Tile Project, to the tune of 170,000, was changed, and the Deer Path Cube Project, which is estimated right now at $794,843. In addition to those two known projects, what, when we approved the budget in September, since then, in December, the board also authorized the prepayment, the early payment, of an IMRF, Early Retirement Incentive. That was done in conjunction with the City of Lake Forest. The board approved that in December. That's $539,134. So those are the only three changes in the budget from the original adoption in September. We will have, as you recall, typically at the end of every year, May, June, we will come back and ask the board to authorize any small line item budget transfers, you know, movement from supplies to, you know, professional development or travel. Those are all small, and we do those in bulk right at the end of the year. So this will not change that process, but this is covering these three larger items.
Jennifer, the only thing I can think of is the possibility of litigation with respect to the cost overrun on the tile change-out. How do you feel? Are we in sort of a neutral position, or is it a footnote to the statements? Or, now I'm thinking audited statements. This is just a budget, but do you think we have upside, more downside, or kind of a neutral position?
What we're thinking now is the 170 is probably net, where we might end up in any particular circumstance with that. As you know, we do have ongoing discussion regarding where the responsibility for that lies. We would certainly notate it in our audited financial statements, in particularly of what this project was.
Any other questions, board members? So the other two items, we already did vote on at prior board meetings and approved, both the Cube and the IMRF ERI, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Board members, may I have a motion to approve the tentative amended budget?
I move we approve the tentative amended budget.
Second?
I second that.
May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to the approval of the auditor renewal. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. I'd like to compliment Mrs. Hermes and also Mr. Albus on the work that they continue to do to bring us really reliable data on our budget. The fact that our last audit was a finding-free audit, that's one of, one or two percent of the audits in the state, I believe, that were finding-free, really a huge amount of work that goes into making that as clean as it is. And Mrs. Hermes, I'd like to recommend renewal of one of those contracts.
Give you a little bit more details. Thank you for the lead-in, and also the nice lead-in from Mr. Schuler, but we do have independent auditing services contract up. We originally did a three-year shared service type agreement with Miller Cooper and Company. We did a one-year renewal of that contract last year. Staff is recommending we approve a three-year renewal at this time, and there's a couple of factors that play into that. We think this firm has a pretty clear understanding of our shared service relationship and the relationship between districts. It's not the easiest thing to understand, that we run double sets of books, double sets of budgets, double of everything. They have an outstanding reputation both on the local, state, and national level. They do a really nice job of mixing their onsite team. So they will always have leads, and they also, which is a mix of both new and also existing auditors. So we're not starting from scratch every single time, but you are getting a new, fresh perspective every single year. We have taken a look at the pricing of our audits. They are very comparable. We do get a little bit of a discount because of the shared services aspect. They do have the ability to bring out a larger team and then split them among both districts, so they're not going out, you know, coming up for one and then coming up for the other, and there's some efficiency on their end. Also want to talk a little bit about the pricing. You'll see with the attachment that there is a price for the district, which will remain, that will remain in force, but also there's a single audit price. And to Mr. Anderson's point, one of the things on the federal level is, is our federal funds, although our mandates haven't changed, our federal funds have fallen below the level in which we would have to do a single audit, which means our federal funds have fallen below $500,000. So it's a good news, bad news. The good news is, is you don't have to pay for a special audit to them on that, but the bad news is, is we're now under $500,000 on our federal funds. So we do have pricing. If we fall below the $500,000 again, we will not pay for that portion of the audit. So we're recommending a three-year renewal of $26,500. If we did a one-year, we're recommending the three-year at $25,500, $26,250, and $27,000 year three. That is including the single audit, which is worth about $2,500.
How long have they been our auditors?
Four years. They did also, and I included in the memo, but I also should note, they did have a change in principal, would be on our account for next time in accordance of best auditing practices. Best practices is the partner that would come in and review it for the final audit is, would be new for next year.
And they audit the high school as well?
Yes.
I like the fact that they rotate new people in, keeping the continuity with some carryovers, but rotating a new lead and other people, and I think that's very helpful.
And just to make sure I'm clear, we do not pay that single audit fee of $2,500 if we're below the $500,000 from the federal government, correct?
Correct. Any district that isn't receiving more than $500,000 is required to file a single audit. If we fall below, we don't have to do it, and we would not pay the $2,500.
Okay. Any further questions, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the auditor renewal?
I move that we approve the auditor renewal.
May I have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to the approval of human resources items, including hiring, resignations, terminations, medical and family leave, absence, and change in status. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald. And I'd like to call on Mr. Malin to give us an update on if there is anything he would care to add here. I have one comment on this. I'd like to, again, thank Mrs. Hermes for her work in securing the contract with Mrs. Jackson. This is one of the things that, after a very long process and going into a long weekend, I wanted to have it wrapped up on Friday and not have it linger, because one of the things that the board has made very clear is they are very interested in succession planning and thinking about what our leadership positions are going to look like in the future, and did not want to have anything get in the way of that. And Mrs. Hermes, in characteristic fashion, was fast, funny, and efficient. And asked her to please contact Mrs. Jackson, and a very short time later, got a lengthy response that said, "Done." And so, thank you very much for that, Mrs. Hermes.
Okay. In this case, I do not have too much more to add, except that it was just really rewarding to be a part of this principal process, and there were a number of administrators involved and teachers as well in helping us get to this point. So we feel really happy about what the outcome is, so, thank you.
I have one additional comment I might make, because easily overlooked, Mrs. Hermes was the closer on the deal, and what I should've commented on earlier and did not was the fact that Mr. Malin put all of the paperwork together, crafted a process that was really recognized widely and deeply by our teaching staff as being incredibly thorough, and is a compliment to the school board and to Mrs. Whipple. Our teacher said, "If you can model, if you can have a process that works like the superintendent's search process, you'll do the district," and our teachers are building a real service. And compliments to Mr. Malin. Those were exactly the kind of things that were extended by our teachers on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the human resource items?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda, where we have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements, the minutes of an executive session from January 22nd of 2013, the minutes of a regular meeting from January 22nd of 2013, the minutes of a joint board meeting on February 21st, 2013, the release of executive session minutes from February 2010 through November of 2012, and the disposal of audio recordings from May 2011 until June of 2011. Is there any item that a board member would like removed for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wald?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. This brings us to our FOIA requests. We had FOIA requests from Pat O'Brien of CL Graphics, and we had four FOIA requests from Nancy Thorne on Blodgett Avenue in Lake Bluff. Announcements. First of all, we would like to offer our sincere congratulations to the Deer Path Middle School. The debate team placed third in the conference debate tournament. Congratulations to them. And the wrestling team placed first at the regional tournament. So congratulations to all those students and their coaches that have helped them on their way. On Thursday, February 28th, there will be conferences, and so we will have half-day student attendance. Friday, March 1st, 2013, there are conferences with no student attendance. Monday, March 4th through Friday, March 15th, will be ISAT testing in grades three through eight. And Tuesday, March 19th, will be the next Board of Education meeting for District 67 at 7:00 PM at Lake Forest High School West Campus in the boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.